We're going to call the Tuesday, July 19th, Fancie City Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, take your role.
Here Kenny.
Here. Councilmember Beadie.
President.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Woodliff.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DVW Director.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
And City Engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Assistant comments on agenda-related items. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk on the consent agenda are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of annual hops and props event.
Motion to approve. Okay. All second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to approve consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we please take your role.
Councilmember Beadie.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of an invasive plant control agreement. The Northwest Michigan Invasive Species Network has received grant funding through the Michigan Invasive Species Grant Program and the U.S. Forest Service to manage large source populations of invasive species. One of the group's goals is to manage the population of invasive fragmites on Manastee Lake and Japanese knotweed on Veterans Oak Grove Drive. Their group agreement would authorize the Grand Traverse Conservation District and its contractors to visit and be on the referenced properties for the purpose of removing and/or chemically treating invasive plants. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement under consideration. Is there a motion to take action?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Woodliff, to enter into an agreement with the Grand Traverse Conservation District.
There is a representative that would like to make a presentation.
Okay. Please do.
My name is Miriam Ausley. I am the outreach assistant from the Northwest Michigan Invasive Species Network. I have with me Emily Cook. She's our outreach specialist. So I will make this presentation brief since it sounds like where I need to go. Alright, so the Northwest Michigan Invasive Species Network is a collaborative with over 40 partners, including the conservation districts from Manastee, Grand Traverse, Mila, and Benzie. We are funded with grants provided by the U.S. Forest Service and Michigan BNR. So briefly, I'd just like to go over what an invasive species is. It is a plant, fungus, or animal that is not native to a specific location, which has the tendency to cause damage to the environment, the human economy, and human health. So today, I will be talking about Japanese knotweed. It's one of the two invasive species that we have on Veterans Oak Grove Drive as well as Manastee Lake. Japanese knotweed is native to Japan, China, and Korea. It forms dense colonies that shade out all other vegetation, and it was introduced here as an ornamental plant. It's really easy to identify because it's huge and it takes over huge areas. It can reach up to 13 feet tall. It has a deep taproot and hollow stems. It's referred to here as Michigan bamboo, so you might be familiar with that. It has those beautiful creamy spiky flowers and heart-shaped leaves. So because of the aggressive nature of Japanese knotweed, it is legally prohibited in Michigan. It's legal to possess or to transport the species off of any particular property. So someone can cut it or have it on their property, but they cannot move it under the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act of 1994. This is a picture of Japanese knotweed taking over a homeowner's yard and along the right-of-way of a road. It's easily spread along right-of-ways because of its nature. It can grow from any small plant fragment, so any plant material like stem or roots can sprout a brand-new colony. So when this plant is mowed or knocked over, it will re-sprout with bigger. Like I said, it spreads vigorously, forms large, thick colonies, and the rhizomes, the underneath-the-ground root systems, can extend 30 feet away from the parent plant. So there might be a plant over here, and then way over in your neighbor's yard next year, there's going to be a plant. Japanese knotweed poses a huge risk to our infrastructure. It is adapted to Japan and China, where there's a lot of volcanic action, and it is one of the first plants to recolonize an area after volcanic activity. So it can come up from underneath cooled lava, which means it can also come up under our roads and our parking lots and our foundations of our homes. So we want to take care of this plant so it doesn't cause a lot of damage to our infrastructure. Like I said, it can cause a lot of damage, and in the UK, there is evidence of people having difficulty selling their homes or buying a home if there is Japanese knotweed on the property. There's a picture down there on the bottom right corner of Japanese knotweed that's wiggled its way into somebody's house because it is just so aggressive. And people's property values have dropped more than 250,000 euro, which is about $300,000. So the other invasive species that we have on Veterans Oak Grove Drive and Manastee Lake is invasive fragmites. It again grows over 13 feet tall, forms these dense stands and colonies that outcompete native species. There is a smaller species of fragmites that is very difficult to tell from the invasive. There's a picture here. On the right is native fragmites. It's much smaller than the fragmites on the left. This is a picture of a normal-sized woman with fragmites towering over her cover. So you can see it can easily impede vision along right-of-ways in roads or along our beautiful lake shores. So this picture was taken about a week ago by our Habitat Management Specialist, Fields Ratliff. On the left, we see a lot of Japanese knotweed that lines basically the whole entire stretch of Veterans Oak Grove Drive. And then on the right is invasive fragmites, much of which is along the side of the railroad there. And this is a map from MISIN, which is the Midwest Invasive Species Identification Network. And all of these pins represent a population of invasive species, fragmites or Japanese knotweed, that have been either reported by us, the Invasive Species Network, one of our partners, or concerned citizens. And this is the section of the road in consideration. In green are parcels where property owners have given us permission to treat Japanese knotweed on their property. And then in the yellow is the city of Manastee's property and the right-of-way. So you can see there are a number of populations recorded there. Like I said, there's a lot of risks involved with not treating these two invasive species. They reduce visibility and block signs along our roadways. They damage pavement, foundations, and other structures. And fragmites in particular increases the potential for fire. Michigan is experiencing a drought, although we've had a little bit of rain, and the dried stalks and the seed heads are very, very flammable. So our recommendations are to not mow these invasive species. Like I said, they both sprout from rhizomes and plant material, so as it's mowed and cut down and split into fragments, it's really doing a lot to help these plants spread. So our recommendation is not to mow the right-of-ways, but to treat them so that they will die back. Again, like I said, it's illegal to transport Japanese knotweed, and any attempt to dig up either of these plants is pretty much futile because they're so aggressive. They have expensive root systems. I mentioned MISIN, which is the Midwest Invasive Species Information Network, excuse me. And they have an awesome app and website that concerned citizens can report invasive species and get more information. And then we would love to work with you as the ISN, or we can recommend a licensed herbicide applicator to help you treat your situation carefully. I wanted to talk a little bit about treatment. In particular, Japanese knotweed can take several years to treat based on the age, the size, and the density of the population. We use for Japanese knotweed, we use enazomox, which is the active ingredient in Clear Cast, which is aquatic-approved herbicide. We also use glyphosate for the fragmites. And then we also include a blue tracer dye to help our crews make sure that what needs to be covered by this treatment is and that they don't go off-target. And then monitoring and follow-up treatment is required for about four to seven years, again depending on age, size, and density. So our next steps here are that we request permission from the city of Manastee to treat on-city property in 2016. We're hopeful to start treatment at the beginning of August to tackle Japanese knotweed, and at the beginning of September to take care of the fragmites along Veterans Oak Grove Drive and on Manastee Lake. We have funding from the Michigan Invasive Species Grant Program to treat these source populations this year. That grant goes through September 30th of this year. And for future treatments, we hope that the city would consider a cost share with us to help cover the costs of treatment. Follow-up treatment could last three to five years with monitoring thereafter, which ISN would be taking care of. And of course, if you have any public comments about the treatments, please refer them to us so that we can give them the right information. We are doing a lot to spread community awareness about the treatments that we're anticipating of doing. I will be attending the Manastee Farmers Market this Saturday as well as on August 6th to talk about concerned citizens about the treatment. I am also hopeful that there will be an article published in the News Advocate. And then I've also brought these treatment signs, which we have, to put along Veterans Oak Grove Drive and along Manastee Lake to let people know why these plants are dying back and who to contact about if they have any questions.
Yes. What is the expected or estimated cost the city needs to contribute?
Well, that is a difficult number for us to pin down this year because we haven't treated it yet. So when we estimate it, or excuse me, when we treat it this year, we'll have a better estimation of the costs that will be required. So, yeah.
You're going to pay, the first year, you're going to pay $32,000 to do that?
That's an estimation. It may cost less than that, so.
Are you going to cover the first year?
Yes, correct. We will be covering the cost of this first year of treatment.
And then we pay for the monitoring?
No, that will be us as well. We have a technical crew that will be out there doing the treatments as well as the monitoring. So we are committed to making sure that this source population is taken care of effectively, and so we will be doing the monitoring. Of course, with citizens' help, you know, letting us know how things are going, if they have any comments, and we, of course, we would love to help from the city, but we are committed to monitoring these sites.
The monitoring is going to be four to five years. You know, kind of going with the concept of being, what, in your experience, what do you think that cost is going to be in the future? I mean.
Well, the cost of monitoring will not be on you. That will be the Invasive Species Network incurring those costs.
The continued treatment.
To continue treatment? I'm not an expert in that, if you have any input. Yeah.
Yeah, so the treatment will be significantly less. We hope after the first year's treatment to have about 80% to 90% die off of plants. So next fall, we come back and monitor and see, we should have a severely reduced number of plants. So I would say less than half of what the cost this year you could expect from following treatments. And then each year, that number would go down initially as the plants die.
I think, you know, I think the cost-sharing aspect of it, to me, is a bit of a concern. If you look at $32,000 this year and say, you know, following year, it was the same price, and we're 50% at $13,000, and if you look at a five-year follow-up program, you're looking at $80,000.
Absolutely, and I completely understand why that would be a risk. I think the best thing we could offer you at this point is for the future years to give you a number based off previous treatments that we've done. This is really the largest treatment we've ever dealt with at ISN. And as far as in a single area, we've done a lot of pocket treatments other places, but we could probably get some contractors to throw a potential number out for you before the decision is made. And like I said, that would not be for this year, that would be for next year, so there would be plenty of time to agree one way or the other. But absolutely, it's a big number, and we're aware of that. So, and also, the grant period ends September 30th, but we're very hopeful that we'll continue to get grant funding in future years. So it's possible, there's no guarantee, but it's possible that we'll be able to incur more than, you know, 50, 60, even 75% of those costs in the future.
We were just invited to submit a full proposal to the same grant program. Our pre-proposal was approved and invited back, so we're hopeful for that treatment. Eric, excuse me, that funding.
Was any treatment down at Portage Lake?
Not for fragmites or Japanese knotweed. The Portage Lake Watershed Association has been involved in treating some aquatic invasives on the lake, but we went out directly on that. They kind of took on that task themselves and contracted that out.
And how long, how long has this program been building?
ISN? Since 2010, we've kind of been in several different forms, but in its current form since 2010.
And this Japanese knotweed, how long have you been fighting this?
Good question. We've been fighting it since the beginning. It was really only identified as an invasive maybe in the last 15, 20 years. It was introduced intentionally. People wanted it in their yards as an ornamental plant, and then they realized that it was eating their houses, basically. So that's when groups like ISN came in and started making it a priority on our list.
So over a five-year period, the costs went down for treating this?
Yes, especially because we go to a lot of private landowners who maybe have just a smaller population, and each year, it's significantly less because, like I said, you have that, hopefully, 80% to 90% die off. That's our goal. And that was dropped at twice just immensely.
So what would you figure on the percentage of, after the first year, you said about half, and then after the second year, would it be, what would it be?
I feel really bad that I can't give you a specific number, but I can only say less because we don't know based on the conditions, how the plants react, how much of that plant will come back the following year. But like I said, we would hope that it would be just a fraction of those initial costs.
The research that I've done tells me that in that first year, you're going to get 70% to 90% of them.
Yep.
And then after that, you're just treating, continually treating that.
Exactly.
And that could go on for four or five years. It shrinks in size until it gets down to above like so.
Exactly.
And then you continually treat that.
Right, the first, the first year's treatment is going to be the biggest effort that we do, the most expensive, the most man-hours and everything, just because there's so much of the plant. And then like you said, there's so much die-off that after that, you're starting to target just individual plants that come back in rather than a whole mile of road.
Do you always spray? Is that what you do, you spray chemical?
Yeah, we'll be doing a foliar application, so we will be spraying, using backpack sprayers. We'll be spraying the leaves, and then the herbicide will be taken down to the roots.
I noticed that there's some on Maple Road out towards Cantu Lake. It looks like a county spray, they're all even.
I'm not familiar with that area. I'm not sure if they sprayed or not, but I have noticed that there has been some breakage, some intentional mowing of it, which would also cause it to die.
My only concern is that everything I read is you don't want to make it mad.
Yeah.
Seriously, you don't want to make it angry.
Yeah.
Because all you do is if you go in there and do a job halfway, and you make it mad, it will come back with a vengeance.
Especially if you treat it with the wrong chemical. A lot of homeowners try to tackle it on their own and might use something that's available widely, like Roundup, the active ingredient, and that is glyphosate. And Japanese knotweed just seems to love it, and it comes back. Like you said, it comes back angry. So that's why we're using Clear Cast, which is, the active ingredient is enazomox. So it's totally different chemical, works differently. It'll.
What can you do with the die-off on these plants?
Well, you can't transport it because it's illegal to transport. So we let it die off, and we can leave it there. It's really.
It will, it will eventually, over the years that we treat it, it'll completely break down.
But you can't, again, I read on the internet, you can put heavy plastic bags, and there are some disposal sites that will take it?
There are some landfills that will take invasive species that we are familiar with. We do that with like garlic mustard, for example. The risk is transportation. We would have to make sure that it's not getting out of our method of transportation at all.
Just for information, if you take a hunk of that wood, the size of your finger down, your little finger down, and drop it on the ground, and it'll take off the plant?
It will, yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah.
It's just unbelievable. Is Mr. Bradford here, Keith?
No, sir.
I didn't hear that we had the money. Do we have the money, Mr. Taylor?
We have nothing budgeted this year, and we don't need any more money this year.
Okay.
Going forward, it's the city's option whether they want to continue with the program. There's nothing that commits them to do other than this year.
Correct.
And I would even recommend, if you're on the fence, just, we'll be able to tell you early summer next year how much die-off there actually was, and at that point, be able to give you a number.
I would like to see some, some help for our taxpayer community in the city that have that in the backyard that they've been trying to get rid of. I stopped at 517 Second Street tonight to look at a big patch of it, and I actually noticed it's growing now along the foundation. And she's, they're not aware that that will actually go through that foundation. If you pour asphalt over that, it'll grow it up through it.
About.
Eventually. I mean, it's just terrible, nasty stuff. But I would like to figure out a way to get some help inexpensively or at no cost to the people in the city that would like to be able to.
Yeah, well, we are certainly open to being a resource for the community and being an educational force here so that we can let people know about Japanese knotweed and how to effectively treat it, and then see if we have the resources to help them.
They don't realize that if you go and mow it, mow it down, you're spreading it to your neighbors.
Yes, exactly.
You're spreading it over the neighborhood, yeah. Thank you.
I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other discussions, questions?
Sounds like an ISIS conspiracy.
Michelle, can you please take your role?
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Beadie.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliff.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communication, and announcements. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Mr. Ed Tegler, who will report on the activities of the Parks Commission and respond to any questions.
Good evening. Hello, Eric. Councilmembers? Hello. Tonight, no PowerPoint presentation, no arts and charts. I'm just going to look at you and wing it, tell you about us a little bit, what we do, what we want to do. I'm going to leave the arts and charts up to Jeff when he goes and does his thing. Let me start by saying that since 2009, when the city council reformed the Parks Commission and combined it with the Beautification Commission, since that point, our membership has been very solid. There's been a couple times where we've lost a couple members due to circumstances that they had in their private lives with work and things like that. Other than that, we've been pretty solid with our membership. We were successful in dropping off the beautification part of our name when we went back to just being referred to as the Parks Commission, which is more in line, we all thought, with what our duties and responsibilities are to the city. And those duties and responsibilities are very simple. We're to make recommendations and give advice to the city council regarding the activities in the city park system. That's it in a nutshell. That's what we're supposed to do. That's something that we take very seriously. We do a lot of research. We have lengthy discussions on the items that are presented to us for our consideration. As a Parks Commission, we're only required to meet quarterly, four times a year. That's all we're required to do. However, we meet every month other than December. We don't meet in December. Not only do we meet every month, but we have formed various subcommittees that meet more often than that, sometimes a couple times a month. If we just met quarterly, we wouldn't be able to keep up with the things that we need to keep up with as far as what our responsibilities are. Just to tell you a couple of subcommittees, one of the subcommittees that we formed is involved with dealing with the improvements we want to do out in Morton Park. We're hoping that collaboration between Morton Park and the city, that something's going to happen out there, the park's going to improve, and there's going to be a safe place for those kids out there in that neighborhood to play. Another subcommittee was formed to help Jeff and the Parks Department go through and discuss and decide on the vendors that we would use at the concession stands. So we had a big hand in that. We've also had a representative that was on the county-wide community recreation plan. She stayed on that from the beginning all the way through. In 2007, the city council requested of the Parks Commission that they have a representative on a non-motorized committee. So they put one on there then, and we still have a member on that committee today. It's still the same member, Mark Tomaszewski. He's still on that committee. Some of the other things we do, on occasions, we have citizens that come to our meetings. They roll out ideas and things they'd like to see happen in the park. Some of the examples fit right into this latest presentation, and that was when Mr. Bob Brook came to the Parks Commission meeting and wanted to talk about fragmites and man-made lake. And the first thing he said was, "I don't really want to come here and create a complaint and all that. I'd just like to see if somebody would come out and look." So I went out and looked, and we walked around Manmade Lake. She's not kidding. Fragmites are serious business. He said, pointed 20 feet away, he says, "That was the shoreline two years ago, and we were standing on the shoreline now." It already lost 20 feet of man-made lake. So she didn't touch upon Manmade Lake, but it's something you guys should probably follow up on. There's a group of citizens in Harper Village that have put some funds aside for that, so somehow it needs to get to Jeff and everybody else, and maybe tie in with Harper Village and work on the fragmites there, or you're just going to lose Manmade Lake. Another thing we had, Rudy Lynn came to us about what to do at the circle going into Douglas Park, and I know that was a big thing for quite a while. We didn't know what to do. We didn't want to put anything in there that would attract citizens over there crossing and all that. So he came with the idea of the flags. We listened, and we thought it was a great idea. We made a recommendation that we do it. Today, those flags are out there flying beautifully, along with that big flag down by the pavilion. A couple other things, we had Patricia Baruki came to us looking for endorsement on signs in the parks regarding smoking in the parks. I know that that's got a little bit of legs, and hopefully, that will come to fruition and will have some signs out there. We know we can't go ahead and completely eliminate it, but there are different ways that signs can be put up to ask people to kind of step aside. So we gave full endorsement to her plan. Other things we've done, we've invited people to come into our meetings. One of the invitations that we put out back a few months ago is we invited the city attorney, George, to come to one of our meetings, and we had some questions on what the legalities were, things we could. things we could do and things we couldn't do, and could we get in trouble if we did do certain things? And George came to the meeting, very informative, spent the whole time with us. Uh, one of the things somebody wanted to know was, if a member or two couldn't attend, are we allowed to Skype our meetings? Can we put our meetings on Skype and have that person be part of the meeting? And at that time, that wasn't an option that was available to us. But George took his time, explained it all to us, and we really appreciated that. Um, as I told you, we dropped the beautification part of our name. And honestly, there were some concerns on the council about us doing that and whether beautification in the parks would be diminished because we took that part out of our name. And really, that's been the furthest thing from the truth. We've had members that joined in. We provided hands-on with projects, the new Rocket Playground. We had members down there. Uh, Lighthouse Play Structure just now, we had members down there. Uh, we've also initiated on our own things to do. We painted toys at the old park, the old historic Rocket Playground. We're pulling weeds, we're picking up litter. We've addressed poison ivy in certain locations in the park. So there was no diminished part of the beautifications in the parks. I just wanted you guys to know that. Just let me spend a couple more minutes telling you about the members that we have. Um, right now, I'm the chairperson of the Parks Commission. That could all change later on in the week when we have our meeting. Uh, we're all up for elections for the next 12 months, so maybe it'll be somebody else. I always encourage anybody that wants to step up and be the chairperson to do it because it is a little different than being part of the commission. The commission members don't get a phone call from City Hall or councilmembers or that. The chairman does. So it's a little bit different. So if somebody wants to step up, I hope they do, and we'll see what happens with that. Another member we have is Erin Pontiac. Uh, she's our vice chair. Uh, been on the commission a long time. Lynn Vasquez is serving as our recording secretary right now. She's been on a long time. Both of them have been up for renomination. They've submitted, and they've been renominated, so they've been on a while. Then we have Jen Teller. We have Jason Sullivan, Mark Tomaszewski, as I've told you. And just let me say something about Mark. I'm not exactly sure when Mark joined the Parks Commission, but it was way back when. He's probably been 15, 20 years on the Parks Commission. He's on the non-motorized commission, so Mark is really involved. And our newest members might quit. Comprising this group of people, we've got young parents with small children, parents with teenagers. We've got older folks with grandchildren that are young, all the way up to teenagers. Our members come from all parts of the city. We have members that live on the north side. We have members on the south side. We have members that live on the east side of 31 and the west side of 31. We've got retirees on our commission. We've got a member that works for a large company on our commission. We even have a member that's an inspiring politician on our commission. So we've got a lot of different things covered on the commission. And this diversity on the commission allows us to have a lot of different thoughts and ideas and topics from when people bring them to us. We don't always agree on everything. We've had some rather opinionated discussions during our meetings, but we've always managed to, you know, do and recommend to you guys what we thought was best for the city parks and even the city as a whole. One thing I can tell you with great certainty is that if you ask us to weigh in and give a thought or advice or recommendation on a subject dealing with the city park system, it'll be well investigated. We will go out, we will investigate it, we'll discuss it, and we'll give you the best, most well-informed opinion and recommendation that we can. With that, thank you for your time. And please remember to keep the Parks Commission in your thoughts when you're thinking about the parks. And now, if you have any questions, I'm ready.
Just want to thank you. We're worth it too. Thank you very much, yeah. Okay. Good. Thanks, Matt.
And next, we'll hear from Mr. Jeff McCooper and staff, who report on the activities of the Utilities Department.
Actually, I brought two young men with me to break it up into two pieces. Bruce Banks is going to do our water side of the presentation, and then Rick Moore will do the sanitary sewer side.
Did you have...
Yeah.
They have, make sure they have a backflow preventer installed to make sure that water of questionable quality does not come back into our system, just to keep it clean, keep it good. A couple things I wanted to talk about as current topics. Last fiscal year, just past us, we had a well seven pump test to put in there. We were going to test well seven, see if we could put it back online. Maybe it is a low pumpage well, another backup. Doesn't hurt to have another well. And the DEQ denied approval of our well seven pump test because of chloride in the aquifer. Our wells, and there's three, there's four wells down there. Three active wells are all between 160, 180 feet below the surface to the screen. Uh, the chlorine readings at that point are 10 to 50 parts per million, which is very low, okay, normal ratings. Now, chloride readings 600 feet below the surface are at 1,900 to 13,000 parts per million. At this time, we're working with Spicer to hopefully resolve this issue. Now, this all came up because of the lead crisis in Flint. If there was no lead crisis, we would already have a pump test done as well somewhere right now. And we'd probably be looking at trying to find money to get that going. But because of that lead crisis, the lead copper rule, there is a gooseneck right there. And what that gooseneck does is it changes the elevation of the water coming from the water main to the water service line that feeds the house. Every house has a different level basement. It's a crawl space, deep basement, shallow basement, whatever. The water line comes out, and you have a gooseneck that connects to the water main. Before soft copper came around, in the 20s and 30s, they used lead goosenecks. That's how they made their connection. And that's actual lead. We have seen some of these in town. We've deleted them as soon as we've seen them. And at this time right now, I don't believe there's any. If we come across some, we get rid of them right there at the time. Because of the lead issue in Flint, the DEQ is having us doing water quality parameter testing. It measures the pH, calcium carbonate, conductivity, temperature, and phosphate. And that's, it's measuring how close of our water, how close of our water could be to the water mains and what's the potential for there being a lead or a copper issue in the future. But we won't know until next year exactly what our testing's going to be. The DEQ will tell us what we're testing. But you can expect very stricter restrictions regarding the lead and copper sampling next year for the city. Flint's in the big spotlight right now. We could see a lot of other towns coming into the big spotlight because Miss Keegan is just like Flint, they just don't know yet. Is there any questions?
Yes.
That's it? Yes, sir?
The wells?
Yeah.
Having water wells in my home, I know that they require maintenance. How early with... Are wells up to speed?
Are wells up to speed? Yes, sir. They're in good condition, they're pumping at a high capacity. We feel real good about them.
Is there a maintenance program? Does it run so long that you have to do something with them?
Every year, we do a preventive maintenance test on E12.
I mean, like, is there projection? I'm thinking of money, putting money aside or having money available to do whatever would need to be done to a well.
It's an average life expectancy. A lot of the times, it's, um, they put the average out there because of the aquifer. Luckily, we have a very strong aquifer that comes from the southeast Fox Farm Road area, and it's heading right towards the channel, and it hits right where the channel appears to be. Um, our aquifer is strong. There is no usage, or is, we're not going to run out of water. Now, the casing of the well, uh, that's another matter. Those have about a life expectancy of about 50 years. One of the wells is approaching that. The other two are in the 30-year range. So we will be working with Spicer to think of what can be done. What's our next step? Where are we going to go?
So if we lose one well, we're still in good shape?
Yes. Any other questions?
Regulated substances. I look on your flyer, and four of the seven regulated substances are on the upper limit. Is that a concern?
No, sir. It's just an action limit that the DEQ takes. It's not a maximum contaminant level.
So if we exceed those numbers, it doesn't matter?
Right. Which one are you talking about in particular?
Uh, like alpha litters, the upper limit is 2.08, and the amount detected 2.08, combined radium, fluoride, nitric.
Those, uh, amount detected, when we do the amount detected, we have to put the highest amount detected in that range. The, our range, those are what was detected. Uh, if you look to the left, the MCL, Maximum Contaminant Level, is 15. Uh, we're well below that, and well below everything else that matters. Good? All right, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. By the way, Jeff, you said you brought a couple of young fellows, but you... I really appreciate that. I accept that. Thank you so much. Of course, my name is Rick Moore, and I'm Deputy Director of Utilities. And I have the privilege tonight to do my very first annual report for you. Uh, you know, I'm fairly new. I've been here about 10 months. And in that time, I found the job very challenging and very rewarding. And I appreciate the opportunity that City of Madison has given me to serve the city in that capacity. So wastewater treatment, let's talk about that a little bit tonight. Uh, here's an aerial photo of the treatment plant. And it was a great day when that picture was taken. It was a very good picture. Uh, I'll look at staffing for a little bit. Um, of course, I'm the Deputy Director of Utilities. My primary task is wastewater treatment, but I'm taking on additional responsibilities as Jeff delegates those things towards my way. I have 42 years' experience in wastewater, which 35 have been in management capacities. I have an A license in wastewater treatment and numerous water licenses as well. Uh, along with me down there is Randy Hunt, who's been with us for 23 years. He's got a D license. And then, about eight months ago, we started having some employee adjustments. Jeff split. He's changed or moved to the DPW department. And then Jerry Bretzazeski, I hope I pronounced that right. We normally call him Jared B. Uh, he retired April 15th after 21 years of service. So then we hired a couple of young fellows, and they're doing a great job. Jake Samaski and Gabe Walker. And they are learning the operation well. We now have really a fairly young crew, uh, but they're doing a great job learning the responsibilities that are going along with the wastewater treatment plant. So combined, we have about 66 years of combined experience down at the plant. So what do we do? Well, of course, we treat sewage. And this past year, we treated 384 million gallons. Uh, that equals about 1,052,055 gallons per day that come through the treatment plant. With a capacity of 1.3 million gallons a day, that means that we have used 81% of the plant's capacity. And that's really in pretty good shape. You know, we have some capacity left, but I'm positive that the treatment plant will be able to handle much more than 1.3 million. But the way things are set up right now, that's the rating of 1.3, and that's what we have to stick with. Uh, along with the operation, you know, a lot of responsibility comes with it. And we operate that plant with a staff seven days a week, 365 days a year. Of course, we operate and we maintain 14 lift stations throughout the collection system, and we operate maintaining all the processes within the treatment plant. These, of course, include the influenarian, the grit system, the bar rate, and the regs and everything that come along with that. Primary treatment, um, along with the sludge pumping, activated sludge process, the UV disinfection, sludge digestion, and gas production. We maintain the grounds and facilities and so forth. And we operate about 50 pumps that are used throughout the collection system in the wastewater treatment plant as well. We produce a lot of sludge at the treatment plant. And we landapie the biosalts produced. We, this past spring, landapied 849,000 gallons of biosalts. And we applied that over 71 acres on some property that's owned by Robert Kowalski, Rick Kowalski. Um, the nutrient value of sludge is very good. And the sludge is also a very good soil conditioner. So he was fortunate, we gave him 133 pounds of nitrogen per acre that we applied on. And we also gave him 188 pounds of phosphorus per acre that we applied. The laboratory. Now, the laboratory work is, I think, one of the most critical portions of the treatment process because what comes out of that laboratory gives us every indication of how the process is going. Certainly gives us the indication that we're meeting NPDAS permit requirements. So it's a crucial portion of our process. We have eight tests that are mandated in our NPDAS permit. Seven of them we do, one we do contract outside our plant to a private laboratory. All of the tests that we do have been revised in the last couple of months. And they've been revised to ensure that we are meeting state standards. Sometimes, over the years, as they progress, EPA, DEQ will change some of the test procedures and so forth that go along with these here. And if you don't stay on top of these types of things, then you kind of get behind. And so, um, we have revised all of these tests to make sure that we are meeting the state standards. And we are, and along with that, uh, the tests that we perform include the BOD, total suspended solazamonia. The test pictured is our BOD test. And then we also do total phosphorus, fecal coliform, pH, and dissolved oxygen. The picture there is phosphorus being... Well, with the laboratory, you know, we need to ensure that the data coming out of the laboratory is accurate. And so we have instituted a rigorous lab QA, QC program, which is Quality Assurance, Quality Control. And the tests that were mentioned just previously all, um, have quality assurance tests that go along with those. And those involve either duplication of tests or we spike some of the tests to see if we can recover the amount that we put in. So it's really quite extensive testing that we do for just lab quality assurance. But we want to ensure that everything coming out of that laboratory meets the standards that we are supposed to meet. Well, the tests that were mentioned earlier are not just the only ones that we do. There's a lot of tests that go along with the operation of the treatment plant itself. All these tests listed basically go along with the activated sludge process. That's a very intense process that we use here, and a lot of tests go along to make sure that we keep it on track and that it's performing up to its maximum. Uh, the mercury is one that I mentioned that we do farm out to an independent lab. In our NPDAS permit, we haven't achieved the program goal of 1.3 nanogram per liter. That's parts per trillion. Uh, this past year, we averaged 0.88. So we're really doing quite good. We're well within our goal, and I hope that will continue the way it is. The O&M manual, we have gone through and totally revamped our maintenance program. Uh, we put the entire plant and the lift stations, uh, we broke those down into weekly segments, which means that every piece of equipment, whether it's in the plant or the lift stations, is either broken down into a weekly, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, or annual basis so that we know what's really going on with the equipment. We've changed it from pretty much a reactive system to a proactive system. What that means is that instead of reacting, oh, this pump's broken down, we're going to now have to fix it. Well, now, proactive, we're looking at equipment ahead of time, and we're doing maintenance on it. And we can see as things change and the equipment starts to wear that we know we're going to have to plan for something here in the near future. So it's a good system that we put in place, and it's, uh, it's new. Uh, it still has a few bugs, but it'll be in, really, a good system when it's completely done. We'll look at some completed projects that we've done this past year. Uh, when I came on staff back in September, uh, we were just in the process starting to put in the Sweden pump station. in the Sweden pump station. That was finished and went online in October. And then after that, they went in, worked on industrial pump station. And then there were some slide gates that we needed to have replaced. Jody Banks was here before me. She had ordered these gates, and I went through them. We got a contract and bids and so forth, and we let the contract out. And we've replaced this gate here in the influent area. We replaced two more gates in the aeration tank influent area, and then we replaced two gates in the secondary tank splitter box. Well, that same contract also contained allotments for these doors. The two doors that were severely deteriorated needed replacement, and the door on the left is for the grit room. The door on the right is for the chemical storage room. They were very decayed, deteriorated, and these have been now replaced with these fiberglass doors that'll last pretty much a lifetime. Generator maintenance. We went out for bids and awarded a contract for annual maintenance on all the city's generators. The city has 16 generators, and so the city has a very large investment in backup power generation, and that needs to be protected. So we went out and we got bids and awarded the contract, so all the generators now are being maintained on a regular basis. Some are run even more regular basis, monthly, weekly, and so forth. So we know that the generators will be there when we need them and not set night old. Phone line conversion. This is an interesting project that we just completed a few weeks ago, and that treatment plant alone, we had 15 phone lines that were land-based. They were costing us a fortune, roughly about the $80 range per phone line. You multiply that out, it's a lot of money. So we took 11 of those and we converted them to cell lines, cell phones. The module is in the picture on the right. And there was a $2,000 investment for each module, so we did 11 at $22,000. But we will save just under $12,000 per year. So in less than two years, we're going to have a payback. And so that was a very good program for us to get into this project, and we'll save quite a bit of money in the near future just by going to sell. Another project we did is the... We have a leaky pipe gallery this year. Picture on the left shows a pipe that protrudes through the wall. There was leakage around that pipe. Water and mud came through, and that gallery had about an inch, two inches of water and mud constantly, and it was a mess. So we got a company that came in, and they used an interesting product. They drilled holes. They injected this hydraulic material inside. When it come in contact with water, it swelled, and it dried it right up. Fantastic. So now the gallery is ready for a coat of paint soon as we can get to that. Well, upcoming projects, mainly the projects that we have are already on the books, they're already in the works, but they're the ones that we have been working on. The RAS pumps. When I came on board, you know, we were just talking about the RAS pumps, and we went out for bids after the first of the year, ran into some issues with overbidding and so forth, and then DEQ gave us a little bit of flack on the types of pumps and whatnot. So we think now through negotiations and spicer, have worked on this a lot for us, that we have this worked out, and hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we should be able to move forward to get these pumps replaced. They have certainly come to the end of their useful life, and it will be really good to get the VMDs in place. They will greatly cut down on the energy usage, and the SCADA will be able to control those and do a much better job operating the activity and such process. Well, the next one is the sixth avenue pump station. Of course, that's already in progress. That's come along very well. I don't know if any of you have gone down that way and just checked to see what's going on, but it's progressing well, and I believe, according to the meeting just the other day, we're talking about another 45 days before that station is completed, but that will be a great asset to us once that is completed and serviced. In the near future, within maybe a budget year or two, we're going to have to do some work on this sludge storage tank cover, renovate it. We'll need to, of course, take the tank out of service. Company will need to come in, sand the last, tighten the underside, cold taric, or some type of coating to protect it, because it's protein. If we don't do something before too long, we'll lose it completely. So that's a project that we need to do, and we'll see that in the budget in the very near future. And then painting throughout the plant. Paint, paint, paint. That's going to be our model. That's going to be our projects here for the next... I'm hoping to have a lot of things done in five years. It's just the plant has been... This aspect has been really neglected, and there's a lot of areas in the plant that just need a fresh coat of paint, just need it to be freshened up so it looks good. And it's not like there's been big neglect. It's just, you know, with 14 pump stations, there's always something going on, and painting does not become the priority. So that's going to be a priority of mine, though, and we'll try to get this freshened up the best that we can here in the near future. NPDS permit, let's take a brief look at that. Our permit did expire back in October, October 1st, 2015, so it means we're operating under an expired permit. DEQ is in the process of working on language for the permit, and we certainly will see language in there that will give us a timetable on how and when we're going to be able to close CSO 18. They want that closed, and it'll be in this language. We'll also see language in there concerning assets management program, and I'll speak about that a little bit more in a moment. CSO 18, however, right now is, of course, the only active outfall that we have. In this past 12 months, we had nine overflows with a total of 39.27 million gallons discharged. So that's a lot of water that was discharged. And if you look at the graph on the right side, it looks like, boy, those are coming right down until we got the 14, 15 junk back up. Well, you know, those are really determined by Mother Nature, and, you know, we get rains and so forth. That junk really is just to overflow events from seven to nine. But still, you know, it will be great to see those come to zero in the near future when we have to take care of that. Assets management, I will only briefly touch on this here. All treatment facilities in the state of Michigan that are rated 1-MGD or greater are going to receive an assets management program in their NPDS permit. And so everybody is going to be faced with doing this type of a program. And what it basically means is that we're going to be inventorying all of our assets that we have in our collection system, the wastewater treatment plant. Then we will take a look at what the life is left, what the replacement cost is going to be, and then come up with a funding source on how that's going to be replaced in the future. We were very fortunate to receive a SAW grant, $1.9 million, and some of that money right now is going, is being used towards the asset end, doing the inventory of manholes and sewers and so forth. So that's a great jump on things, but we have a lot of work to do, and you'll hear more about this in the future as we progress. My last slide, public education. We've had numerous meetings that have been held to inform and educate the public concerning issues that we've had, of course, with CSOs and other things. Several months ago, Sean, Jeff, and myself, we attended a League of Women Voters meeting, and the main issue that night was really about CSOs and so forth. Jeff and Sean did a great job presenting that. Then afterward, we were all filled with questions, excuse me, on different issues in relation to wastewater. But education is just so very important to keeping the public informed. And one thing that I really enjoy doing, and Bruce touched on it, is doing the ground well protection presentations. In May, I gave 150 students tours of the wastewater treatment plant, and just a week before that, I went into the classroom with that model, and I was able to do the presentation, and the kids loved it. But it really gives me an opportunity to teach them and train them, show them what happens if the wrong type of stuff gets in the ground, and how it can contaminate, and how it affects everybody. And so, you know, that's a great education tool, and then to give tours as well. I enjoy doing that. So education is very important, and keeping the public informed, and keep them up to date with what's happening throughout our community. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain. If not, thank you for your time. Thank you.
I have a question. We had, oh, close to half an inch of rain just a couple of days ago.
Point four two inches, yep.
Yep. I was going to say point four three. I'm just curious, do we have any overflow problems, or how close was that to causing...
We downloaded, the next day, we downloaded the data. See, we, in that very manhole where the CSO takes place, we have a transducer now that measures the height of the water as it comes up. And it gets to a certain point, we know it's overflowing, and this transducer, it didn't even come close to reading a number that would have been an issue. So it's been so dry, a lot of the water just soaks into the ground. Half inch, even a week or so before that, we had close to a half inch of rain. That wasn't an issue either. We get up three quarter to an inch or more, you know, we can be a little concerned we're going to have something, but that the other day was not an issue at all.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Concerns and Comments. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen attendants shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Does anyone like to comment? Mr., please come forward. Assistant Mayor.
Yes, Gary Potowski, 159 Quincy Street. I have somewhat of a sensitive topic to discuss because it has to do with a couple of phone calls I received from council members to one of my several phone numbers that I maintain. I maintain a number of phones and different numbers for various reasons. And the first phone call I received was, I think, back in April or May, where a council member called a number that was put on a Facebook page, which was created to ridicule various citizens of the Manistee and also accuse certain council members of wrongdoing, including fraud on my property, which was totally incorrect and false. They decided to put one of my phone numbers on that particular site, and I'm talking about the real Manistee Uncensored. The first phone call I received was an inquiry as to whose phone number is this, thinking that it was a fellow phone number associated to their hotline, okay? I think that council member received the adequate explanation, et cetera. On July the 12th, I received another phone call. I didn't retrieve the message until yesterday because, once again, I don't check all of the messages at home, my phone calls. But this particular one was somewhat embarrassing from the standpoint, the council member asked me to delete a posting that was made on a site that was probably inappropriate, and the council member said it should not have been made by, first by, by that council member himself or herself. Obviously, I cannot delete comments or postings made on Facebook pages, which I am not an administrator of, I do not own, and which are set up literally to ridicule council members and also residents and harass residents. Okay? And that was the reason I believe that phone number exists on that site. It is one of my personal phone numbers, and I guess the joke's on them. And at the end of the day, I don't own that site. On May the 3rd, I think it was, we had a city resident come up here and accused me of owning another site. I do not own that Facebook page. I have one Facebook page, and that is my Facebook page. So anyway, I guess my overall comment is, when anyone, including council members, call a phone number that is associated with a Facebook page that is ridiculing other council members, accusing other council members, or residents or something, be aware, you don't know who you're calling. And that phone number that came in and that message, the council member identified themselves, and was made with me around 11 o'clock in the evening, so obviously, it's on my voicemail. After the first teleconference meeting I came to in July, when I returned to the mainland, I received harassing phone calls beginning around 1:00, 1:30 in the morning. Well, my phones have security on them, so they block certain phone calls, but it monitors the phone calls as well.
Assistant Mayor, just city activities, please.
It has to do with council members who called my phone. I think that's very appropriate.
Professional, so.
Okay? And if council members are being lured into sites and I'm being affected, it has to do with city business, ma'am.
Then I suggest that you please call and at least speak with the city manager so that we can deal with that.
I am addressing it here. The council members know who they are. I think it's very appropriate that it's being made publicly. Okay. Second topic is, I thought Jonathan Cole would be on this agenda since it was discussed at the last work session. I thought it was going to be an agenda item, so I'm most surprised it's not. I would have loved to have more knowledge as to what they plan on doing with that property since the developer told me that they are expecting 90% of that property to be sold to local residents, which is a little concerning based on the lack of employment in this town. And I know the developer is also aware of that and somewhat concerned about that. So I was just kind of surprised. It was not on his agenda, which I thought it was going to be. The second thing regarding, last thing regarding the water and sewer presentation, I think the overflow number 18 per the expired permit was supposed to have been closed some time ago. And I believe the cap improvement plan shows a number estimate around $30, $35,000 to close that. I don't know how accurate that is, but it surprises me that we have something substantially past due that should have been taken place, taken care of, an expired permit. But now we're asking in the state, I guess, to extend the closure of that particular sewage overflow if the cost is such a small dollar amount of $35,000 for public safety. So I'm a little confused how these things are happening, and the priority is being made. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to comment? Please come forward. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and attendees. I'm Jen Teller, and my husband and I own a home at 712 Harbor Drive, and this house backs up to some city-owned property by the Douglas Park Tennis Courts. And I've been here before and given you some information about the issue that we face there. And this, again, is about that tree limb that has grown out from a tree that is now taking away the view that this house always had to Lake Michigan. The tree is not in our sightline, but the branch has grown exponentially large to the north because it was stunted to the south by other trees. We are asking that the city council direct the DPW to trim this branch back to the rope that is now on that limb. We have talked to four other coastline cities, which I presented at my last time here, that deal, who have dealt with these issues of view, and the decision-makers there have all said they would work to have it resolved to the positive. This was presented to you at the last, one of the last council meetings. A recent conversation with Potowski Supervisor of Operations, which is like our DPW, his name is Terry Barrett, when I gave him the exact same scenario as we have here in Manistee, he said he will make the taxpayers happy. There is no tree commission there, no Tree City USA, no applications, no fees, just, again, quote, "we will serve the taxpayers," end quote. When questioned if he was concerned about what the requests or where the requests would stop, assuming there might be a lot of them, he simply said, "it has not been an issue there." My husband and I gave each of you the written procedure that the Harbor Springs City Manager developed, and they, so that they're able to work out limb trims, which are quite frequent there because of their high bluff overlooking the bay. And so therefore, we are asking that until the City of Manistee is able to provide reasonable accommodation for view issues, we would respectfully ask that this one limb be removed to maintain the view through this neglected urban forest. Other cities do it and accommodate taxpayers. We volunteered to pay for it. We volunteered to have a new tree placed in that park, and we've tried to help you with an already written policy. So we would just ask that you would consider voting to have this limb trimmed. The view has been accommodated already for the Lake Shore Motel. When they complained about the new concession stand location that in... about the new concession stand location that was impeding their view. So we feel that you should also be accommodated for private taxpayers facing the same issue. All it takes is the city council directing the DPW to cut the limb. So I wanna thank you very much for your attention and I hope that you will consider our request. Thank you so very much.
Does anyone else like to come in? So now move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Lieutenant, your honor.
City manager?
Lieutenant.
City attorney?
Lieutenant.
Public safety director?
Lieutenant, your honor, thank you.
Just a couple of brief things. I know that council person asked on the status of the shade structures at Fifth Avenue, so if I had asked if I would just give you an update on that. There's two different processes going on right now. We've ordered the shade structures back in May. I got an email last week that said that they were in production, so I'm expecting that they'll be here shortly. The other side is the concrete that goes in the ground to prevent uplift of the structures is required to have a state building permit, so we're in the final stages of that. And then, once we get the building permit, we'll form those up, pour the concrete slabs, and then as soon as the structures arrive, we'll get those installed. So not quite as fast as we had hoped, but we're waiting on the process. The other thing, Mr. Tagler mentioned the fragminis at Manmade Lake. Last year, we did treat the fragminis and we did that out of the park's operating budget. This year, just like the ladies explained, we expect that that first treatment will reduce the amount of fragminis that have to be treated in subsequent years. But we have put money in as a line item in the current park's budget to treat this year, this fall again as well. And then I'd be happy to try to walk you through the CSO stuff, but we'd have to set aside a few hours. Okay? That's it, thank you.
City engineer?
Lieutenant, your honor.
Councilor Levine?
Yeah, a couple of things. This is probably a question from Mr. Taylor. I noticed Bradley driving through One Echema and I was unaware of this, that Ed Bradford is running for One Echema Township treasurer. So I'm curious if that has talked to you about running for that position and if it has any impact on his timing with the city or do you have any concerns?
I'm aware that he is on the ballot and we've talked and he's assured me that it's not gonna take away from his responsibilities with the city. He's aware of the time commitment that they're taking and said it's minimal.
Thank you for letting me know publicly about that. I guess it would've been nice to maybe have gotten a heads up, I don't know. I just, it caught me off guard a little bit.
Councilmember Solinski?
Yes, could I have a, Mr. Taylor, any news on Filer Township? How are we doing with that? Filer Township?
Filer Township, waiting some information back from our city attorney dealing with that. Jeff McCullough talked to an attorney that was working with Filer Township. And basically, it's coming down to terminology. They wanted us to give up all of our mains in the township. The problem is, we have none. We have customers out there that connect to our mains that are in the city through long landways. So now we have a better understanding of what they want. They actually want control of that connection point. So I sent an email to the attorney that we're working with to try to nail down the date and time when we have a phone conference with them to come up with the exact wording that we need to protect the city's interests. And I updated the supervisor this morning about that.
My other question would, thank you for that. The Manistee Township, are we all set with that?
Internally, we're meeting again tomorrow. No, excuse me, I got that wrong. Later this week, we're meeting with that committee, I think it's Thursday. And we met with them several weeks ago for Manistee Township Committee. We're down to a situation where we weren't going to, initially, we weren't on a mandate. They went on a mandate that private residents automatically connect. They had, at that point, the interest in that same kind of safeguard for the commercial customers. And then later in the game, they changed that. So we had some concerns about that and how that affected the overall agreement and the costs and things of that nature. So we met with them a number of weeks ago and tossed out a bunch of ideas and they were supposed to investigate those a little bit more. We're getting back with them this week to see where they are with that. We have received a list of all the potential commercial customers that could connect, so that was a bearing on it. So we're trying, just trying to work out the details, just coming down to, for the length of the, our discussions, they weren't interested in safeguarding the commercial customers from inventory hookups. Now all of a sudden, they've changed that, so we just have to work through the details.
So in both of those situations, I just hear you saying that everything's going along. We just need to clean up a little bit of...
Yeah, we're much, much closer on the Filer Township because now we fully understand, yeah, we were a little caught off guard when they used the terminology of mains because there was no mains out there. And now they're just concerned about where those long landways, where customers connect to our mains. So we just gotta get the right wording so we're not compromising any of our infrastructure that has, comes into the city. So we've just gotta come up with that wording. We might have a little bit more work to do with the Manistee Township on there, but we're, it's all positive, we're just moving forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I would like to thank Chief Buckman and Public Safety for the prompt response on Eighth Street today, diffusing the situation calmly and collectively. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Oh, yeah, just a couple of things. First off, Mayor Proton Gustad, or former Proton, Mayor Proton Gustad is not here, he resigned. I just want to thank him for serving with the city in many capacities. He's always served with professionalism and caring and foresight into the town. He will truly be missed, so thank you to Mr. Gustad. Second, just downtown, noticing downtown is very viable. It's busy early in the morning and late at night. So it's making a nice comeback to much of the shenanigans of some in the community that want to knock us down, so. And that's it.
And I'd just like to expand further on council member Whitlam concerning Mayor Proton Gustad. He sold his home within the city limits and purchased a home outside the city of Manistee, which required him to resign. He enjoyed his tenure up here in council. I think he did a great job. He enjoyed helping the city and being part of the discussions. And where he can, he'd continue to like to be involved, helping out the city wherever he can. So I wish him well in his new home. And with that, unless you wanted to add anything?
Can I just jump in? Don't we need to nominate a new Mayor Proton?
I do not believe you do. The provision in the charter talks about if the mayor would, would seem to be vacant, no mention of that. I think you could if you wanted to have Mayor Proton until the election takes place. I think you certainly can, I don't think it's mandatory.
It talks about a hundred and twenty days.
To fill, yeah, when there's a vacancy, as there is with council member Gustad's seat, you're to fill a vacancy, except if the vacancy occurs within a hundred and twenty days of the city election, it's not mandatory that you fill that.
Well, we could do that. We could fill that position if we want.
You could fill it. It's, it's just not mandatory. You could leave it open until the election if you chose to.
All right, Mayor, I have a question for city attorney. The decision on 12th Street is due tomorrow without that thirty day window?
Well, the court had indicated that, the judge had indicated that he expected to have an opinion within thirty days. Thirty days is tomorrow, you know, certainly would expect it, if not tomorrow, certainly. Thank you.
And I have nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.